And can be charged. So just keep in mind that sometimes that time is charged with the time of each year employees to fulfill these requests. But there are large amounts allowed in statute for some specialty specifically with a lot of technology, time it needs, a lot of technology, you have a lot of special resources on the IT side. It is a provision for just general personnel time if there are companies that need it. And again, it goes back to what happens if someone does not get their gap metered or not.
But this will catch me up.
A judge could require a subpoena from the judge to see whether or not there was a legal violation of the law. And then after you're doing it, he did a lot of it if he did this in an intentional way, that he did not follow advice. So I remember that quickly. And I hope that you were able to glean some of that. And I know that I hit on a lot of topics. I will say that fundamentally, I want to remind you of those building laws, right? That just keep in mind that it seems like something that's public business, that unless there's an exception, that chances are you're going to need to be mindful of whether it's open meeting or public record. But don't feel like you're in the front row of these questions. I might say they're answered, so ask those questions, build these resources. And like I said, when you get back, you may be in your county right now, you may be sitting with your manager, you're attorney, you're court. Ask what kinds of policies you have with regards to public records, open meetings. And I'm seeing real quickly, I missed the screen about personnel time. I think that was the question. Yes, and I would tell you real quickly on this, that we, what we do at the General Assembly, there has been legislation introduced multiple times to try and allow for charging of personnel time. So if your county spends a lot of time, your department had, there is a point you spend hours compiling information to respond to a public records request, that personnel time in and of itself cannot be charged. You can charge from your county for actually the red costs rate, if they're, you have a thunder in the hand over your copying costs, your surferies will also be charged for that one. Or if they're extraordinary IT costs, you have to do something to create something on an IT standpoint, there's potentially a provision that specialized IT personnel time, there can specialize areas that may be charged, but general personnel time is not something that can be charged as part of public records. That's all. I still appreciate your patience, your indulgence, your time. I am now going to turn it back over to, is it Sarah from there? What's the three coming up from the center?
Thank you, great job. We'll just go ahead and take a break at this point, so we can let in all the coaches who are going to join us for ethics. So we'll begin at 10:15. So a quick break here, and we'll see everyone back also in the hallway.
All right. I'll hear more later. Okay.
Okay. Morning, everyone. Thanks for being patient. We got...
Sarah, your topic of the day.
I just realized that, thank you. Yeah, good morning. Thanks for being patient. We tackled open meetings and public records this morning, a big topic to tackle in a short period of time, so took a couple of minutes there. We'll get started right at 10:15 with ethics. And just so appreciated, anyone joining in. I think we're expecting about 100 more coaches to join for the ethics portion of the program today. And yeah, I'm glad you wanted to provide a break. And of course, you know, at this point, use the chat, use the ring hand if you want to pose a question, be recognized, and just remind our speakers if you don't need to speak. Thank you. Right after the two hour ethics portion with a 15 minute break, right after the first hour, maybe ten, just made that quite a lot of love. Yes. Okay, here it is. Good morning. Sarah, how are you? Good as well. Thank you for joining. I think that's all for tonight, thank you. I'm going to go to the studio.
I'm going to get you some job, man.
Thank you for being here. And you know what we're doing is this evening, we're going to have your county name, decide your name. That way, our community can see where you're from, so we can do that by getting a very little stop to the upper right corner of your, your box, and get ready to have your county designated area.
Good morning, Sarah. This is George, I'm from Mary County. I can hear a problem, you know, it's that I have been in my car, I'm only switching over to my computer right at home, hopefully within the next six minutes, but I want you to know that my place disappeared, that's why.
Okay, very good. Thank you for attending, Mr. Dunlop. And more than, you know, a bit for instructions to start with the beginning of the meeting here on consultation for purposes today. So you have the next guy, your friend, just sit in the chat, wait for your answer.
Good morning, Sarah. This is Steven from Bragg County. And as you know, I run a charity, and I'm here at the charity, but I can't hear you see I won't have my company even out, so I can't ask him for emergency questions, so I'll be the rest of the day back here.
Not a problem. Thank you for the mention, and just greeting the work review here. You know, they were, thank you for the rest, I think it's more important than that. We expect about 150 guys.
Sarah, we need to get some more information.
Yeah, thank you, morning.
I agree with my fellow commissioners and question.
What happened to this line?
As well as being here.
I want to be here. You never asked me, well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just being here. You're the resident of the local community, I'm here. Thank you, very good morning.
Good morning, Eric. Louisville County, permission? Good morning.
All right, thank you, you're here. This is the number getting down. Is my permission board, will be your... Their way. Very challenging here. Good morning.
Do you see the lawyers? Do you see the lawyers?
What? Martha Lee, a night machine early. The child is out of home, ready now?
Please, sir, will you give your favor?
Yeah, I can't.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry, we're asking now.
I see your name, all right.
So if you didn't, you were right by the light now.
Here you are. Good morning. The other child, long ready now? Sir, if you're going to put our videos next time?
It's all the clothes off.
Well, good morning. What a great man out there. Here we go. I'm sorry, we got far, but it's all on. I'm wanting to talk first. You're going, it's 3:30. I come from Miami. You're going to Miami. Thank you so much. Charity. Yes. This is...
This is what the back of all the...
Please, you want to come here? Okay, and we'll bring you along? Yes?
Say yes.
We don't have one.
There it is.
You're not...
I don't want to make it nice way.
That's what my face is. So here we go. You're going to be a woman, I'm going to be my house. The body will be here, and maybe it just went away? Okay. Hello? Yeah. I have a seat, I'm here, I'll see you all out there, you're big, what the hell? We need to be in the room, morning. Yes. You're going to take that. I'm trying to have fun, remember, time? Good morning. Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
He wants it, he might have been coming back.
I'm here. Now, when you can't tell, what are you saying, what is going to tell?
What we're going to tell for?
I said you can't do it yet.
Like, how do you say? I cover Jordan Davis. Once you're done, just put your head on. That's right. Keep it in charge.
I'm happy to see you. I'm sure that it's so nice to have you tonight.
Another thing, you said, how?
This volume, they can learn. I'm very happy to see you. Do you know who you're with? Do you know what's there? You're the girl's mom. Yes, I can, it's really beautiful, it's brilliant.
Good morning. This is Jack Ryan from Concord County.
Why, who's her bride? Hey, nothing like to require, try to get right off together, huh?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Hi, this is Lisa Stacey from Sanders. How are you doing? We're getting better. This is what I'm hoping for, obviously. It's pretty here. Good morning, Sarah. This is Brad, what are you doing here? Get him down. Good morning, I need to see you. Okay, it's starting here just real shortly, and instructions at the beginning about consultation for extended access, any basis, expectations, they're all possible that we could... Sarah, I'm going to go ahead and meet everyone, just to start. And then we'll give some information, just while I'm joining, sort of period of instructions. We need to reveal a lot of chance, obviously, but this here, when you meet it, that's me right now, so we'll start that. Some of the audio, the instructions, thanks, everyone. I'm ready to call. Can you hear people coming in?
Yeah, I'm ready now. It's me, if you want to say, because it's...
Sure. Yeah, so these are the time, we're going to ask everyone, stick on, we'll see you call for the full two hours of ethics. We have a break until the end of, so if you hear this, I have all the signs, I can hop, if I can, I can. What we're going to do is ask you what your name and jurisdiction in chat, we're going to check this in the chat, so I'll make sure we capture everyone. So if you want to see, um, who's on, I just want to determine the number, which means it was in the, uh, time, first of all, with it, any time, uh, in, you know, when you're not. And then, um, just here, it's not where you're going to show the form, and so what we're going to do, we're going to check this in the, say, um, and you will see that you want to, there's a space, there's a happy, you're going to put your, like, that verification on the spot. So you're going to put it on, you're going to take it, you're going to print, sign it, and then you're going to examine it, and it's one of the documents, and boxes, all that's going to be on there, in file. But there are some questions, it's immediately, it's, um, it's down, it's down, it's down in the... That's what I'm really...
Thank you. So thank you for coming here. I was going to say, you get an expression that these things can be accurate, or something special about me, that you are going to join us, more recently, for just this portion, and once again, we've heard from the election that we're required to, that was an extreme, that you're required by statute, as you know, and I think you're being here, I'm here in front of this, and in front of this discussion, uh, so you can continue, that there's been called a legal requirements and significant considerations for your service as a... My name's Carter Cruz, and the fact that you never got it, I'm going to announce that you joined in February, it was me right before the pandemic, it shows down in some ways, but we're still here, and I'm going to be here with you, I have a spot, although we're here, I mean, I'm attracted, and I see from the circumstances, I think, I'm going to be wrong, and I'm joined by, I'm afraid, these teams, you are entering the chat box for us. I'm assuming you have a question, you need to, if we're using the chat box right, we'll hear. Amy Basin is also with me from the Association for Us to Respond, or she'll respond herself. Also joined, as I mentioned, by Amy Basin, she is Director, Deputy Director and General Counsel for the Association of County Commissioners. We're hoping this session can be somewhat interactive, taking into account your questions and concerns that you might have about issues that... You are... Questions, well, if you can just respond, yes, no, if there are any questions, um, that'll be very interesting, it's a different... So with that said, let's get it, I think it's started. And, uh, sorry, I covered a lot around, maybe, maybe, short bit this time today, I know, two hours, I'm trying to make a little short bit this time, but it's, it, it, it is a short bit of time to cut. It's a time about distinguishing legal requirements, that is, things that you're required to do, or things that you're... Or under other applicable legal provisions. We'll talk about distinguishing those from ethical standards. And in doing that, we're going to talk about the codes of ethics that each Board of County Commissioners is required to adopt under state law, and your Board, I assume, has done that at one time or another. Then, I'll pose a series of questions to help you think about your service on the Board, and how it interacts with your desire to serve your community. We're going to talk about your ethical duties to the public as a whole, to the Office of County Commissioner, and to the Board. We're going to talk about a hypothetical scenario, and if you were able to access it in the course site, and if you're not, I think we might be able to put it in the chat box, a hypothetical scenario about citing a landfill in a county to get you thinking about the ethical issues that you might face, and how best to represent those folks that elected you, that didn't in the whole of your community. We'll talk about compliance with ethical codes, how those ethical codes can be enforced under state law, and what penalties there are, if any, for non-compliance. Lastly, we're going to talk about key legal requirements. Those of you that have been on the Board for a while, probably familiar with these, we'll talk about the duty to vote that's applicable to County Commissioners. We'll talk about a prohibition against benefiting from a public contract between a unit of government and a private party. So, and then we'll talk lastly about some prohibitions against receiving or soliciting gifts and favors from certain individuals, folks like third-party contractors who might be under contract with your county. All right, so let's begin, and let's distinguish between a legal requirement and an ethical standard. And this is not going to come as surprise to most, but a legal requirement sets a minimum standard of conduct. That is, it's a thing that you have to do, an action that you have to take, or an action that you're prohibited from taking. So let's say, for example, that the General Assembly has passed a statute that criminalizes survey. In effect, what it's done is decided that no one in the state is permitted to take that action. Oh, and Tookie, of course, let me know that my PowerPoint isn't showing, so that's going to be my first item. I would have gotten through two hours' content just talking without you seeing my slides. So I apologize. So we're going to talk, let me go back a minute. Here's the agenda, this is what we're going to talk about, if you're listening, but this is contained in the PDF of the slides, it's, you know. So like I said, the legal requirement is a standard that you have to follow, and the law sets minimum standards of conduct. That is, things that you have to be, or can't do. And a violation of that legal requirement has a legal consequence. So the state imposes a penalty, perhaps it's a fine, perhaps it's jail time for violating that. And by contrast, an ethical standard is not necessarily dependent on the law. Just because the General Assembly is not criminalized or prohibited a certain type of behavior, doesn't mean that you necessarily should take that action. So I think it's helpful to remember that the law is a floor. It's a floor for your conduct. It is not a ceiling. Now, in some circumstances, that following the legal requirement, that basically the requirement might be consistent with an ethical standard, but sometimes ethical standards might require more. So what should those higher ethical standards be? Well, this is a session about ethics, but I'm not going to be able to take you through a detailed ethical analysis of all the issues you might face as a county commissioner. But as a general rule, I think it's appropriate to consider this, that as a public servant, you serve the public. The emphasis in that statement is public. So you're obligated to put the public's interest above your own private interest when you act as a public servant. Another important principle here is that public perception can be just as important as the reality of the situation. So even if something doesn't violate the letter of the law, you'll need to consider, how would the public perceive this? So even if it doesn't violate your own sense of ethics, would it violate your community's sense of ethics to take a certain action? Always ask yourself, is this something that I'd be comfortable seeing on the front page of a newspaper, whether that newspaper is online or in print, as a helpful standard, in considering what action to take? So what are the applicable legal requirements to your service as a county commissioner? So this morning, we're going to talk primarily about restrictions contained in North Carolina law, that is, state law, laws that are passed by the North Carolina General Assembly. Now, it might be the case that in a certain field, for example, in connection with the expenditure of federal rate numbers, that additional restrictions might apply. That's not going to be the focus of this lecture today. But certain state statutes restrict, among other things, your ability to vote, that duty to vote statute that Amy's going to discuss a bit later, to contract with the unit that you serve, to receive or solicit gifts and favors from certain contractors or other third parties, to misuse confidential information, that is, to use information made available to use in person capacity as a county commissioner that's confidential, and then using that information to benefit yourself or another. And then, of course, there are restrictions on disusing public crap, things like investment. We're not going to discuss things like investment today in detail, but if you need a refresher on relevant investment statutes, please, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'd be happy to discuss. So in addition to those statutes that I mentioned, North Carolina law, that's about 10 years ago, requires people to adopt a code of ethics. That code, as we'll discuss a bit later, is an aspirational code of ethics that addresses your ethical obligation to do certain things. And the statute, if you take a look at it, spells out what that ethical code has to address. It addresses your obligation to obey all of the laws, applicable laws, that is, to uphold the integrity and independence of your office, the office of county commissioner, to avoid any infringing any exercise of your official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of your office, and to conduct more business in open and public manner. Amy just talked in some detail in our last session about how the law requires you to do that. So if you didn't know already that your unit had a code of ethics, or you're interested in revising it, I encourage you to take that action. That can be an important process, not only for your Board, but also for the public that you serve, a good way to engage votes. It can be a process in which you entertain comments and input from the citizens that you serve, to know what they believe is ethical conduct, and to reconsider it every once in a while, doesn't have to be every year, but it's helpful to pull it out and take a look at what that code requires. So this is a simple formula to keep in your head when you're deciding how to take, how to act, and this has been in use since school of government for some time now. So you always first ask, is the action that I'm about to take, is this a legal action? Now, your counsel might be able to assist at that question, or if you have questions about the law, the school of government might be able to help you analyze that question as well. But even if something's legal, you've got to determine whether it's ethical. Now, other folks can't always answer that for you. We can point you to resources where folks can analyze the ethics of the situation under various ethical principles, but at the end of the day, that's a determination that you have to make for yourself, taking into account the code of ethics to which you're subject, your own sense of ethics, and the community's sense of norms and ethical conduct. So, once you've asked yourself, is this action legal? Is this action ethical? At that point, you can come to your decision and decide how to act. So if you're, if you're very interested in what we're discussing today, and I hope you are, I encourage you to take a look at a book, I've got it right here, if you can see it, it's kind of, not showing exactly, but it's called Ethics Conflicts in Offices, A Guide for Local Officials, by former professor, Lenny Bell. It covers much of what we're talking about, he was a professor in the school of government that he might interact with. In that book, Professor Bell cites Galloway and Tierney, and that fellow noted that public officials act in a dual capacity, so they're both citizens first, and they're citizens who have agreed to do work on behalf of all in the community. And by being elected to office, you have become what Cooper calls an especially responsible citizen. And so I think it's helpful to consider that, that truth, an especially responsible citizen, when considering their ethical duties in your service on the Board. Some of you might not be able to...
Connor, excuse me to interrupt him, put somebody else in the chat, we can put the name of that book again?
Sure. It is Ethics, Conflicts in Offices, A Guide for Local Officials. It's the second edition. It was published in 2010. I just think it's a, it's a helpful overview of most of the state law, it's free to just put it in the chat.
Cool.
So some of you might be visual elders, I am, and I think it's helpful to think about some of these duties in the context of a Venn diagram, we're going back to middle school math here, this is what. So, first, you have duties as a county commissioner to the public, that is, the public that elected you, and the community in your case, the county that you serve. You also have duties to the Board, to your fellow Boardmen. You also have duties to the board, to your fellow board members. Perhaps acting civil, acting with the willingness to compromise, acting to respect the institution of the Board of County Commissioners. You also have duties to your own office, to know that it is not yours, that instead that office belongs to the public and that you're merely filling that role for a time. For those of you familiar with the concept of fiduciary duty in a corporate sentence, I'm not talking about that strictly in a legal sense. I'm talking about this as a way to conceptualize how you consider what your ethical duties are on a county mission and how these might be like with one another or... So let's talk more about these duties and what... I'd like to ask you first a series of questions to help me think about the public that you serve and there are multiple ways to think about that. So what public do you serve? Who is the public? And there are multiple ways to think about that. One public is those that pay taxes, or have these obligations. Do you serve persons that are living in charge of this particular office? But it's not the only public that you serve. Some of you might consider your base of residence a county that does their actively efficient political process. But there are certainly some who voted for you, and there are certainly some that you might vote against. They're part of the county as well, and they have expectations in your county that's... How should you engage with those folks? Do you have a duty to serve about that? About having to have them? Do you not even consider views of those who don't even live in your jurisdiction? Do you consider privacy that is appropriate? In some respects, it is appropriate to consider the views of those who might live across North Carolina. This is a part of our democratic system, I think, is ensuring trust in our elected officials. And if I serve as a county commissioner, you all believe that's an important principle. And so by joining the democratic system, passing a local official, you're setting an example for others, other county commissioners, even outside of your county or even outside of the state of North Carolina. And so in addition to considering the relevant public, once you've sort of thought about those different discussions of the public, is it appropriate to consider what ethical duties you might have for each group? Do you have a duty of self-represtation? You might heard about that in a legal context. You had a lot of experience. And it's a ethical theory or principle that encourages self-represtation in North Carolina. That is, to put the interest of the client above the sort of obligations. In some respects, I think that's an appropriate framework to consider your service in county commissioners.
Yeah, it just went off. I think it's the cord. When I wiggle the cord, it moves.
Also, that's how you make decisions. Are you ready to get a tie with your... In Frank Williams, Commissioner Williams brought up one or two times, sometimes the officers just agree with each other on the basis of the best possible action. I think that's exactly right. This is a helpful way to think about how you might reconcile those various disagreements. I think that you owe a duty of technical to be technically competent. Now, for the government, for those of you who have been in it for a while or that's new, it's very broad. Even those who have been working in county government for years and years. Don't always say you're a representative, but it seems rather odd now to make efforts to seek that technical competence. Your duty here today, why, in terms of understanding of the constraints which you must have. You're not always going to know everything about our insurmountable parts of the work. To deem any technical competence that you can give your representative. And you can't be actively engaged without technical competence. So I think technical competence is a prerequisite to an active engagement. But you've also got to consider, how do you know about the due diligence? Do you consider the views of those that might disagree with you? Might have different views, facts, or draw different conclusions? And as part of your duty to the public, it would seem appropriate you to actively engage with others on board. Again, that's a fundamental part of trust, public trust in how many officials that they are doing each other and that they're paying attention. And the most basic requirement of the kind of thing is legal compliance at a theoretical base level. However you define it, the county commissioner can't represent his representative without breaking laws. And so that is the most, the most severe, I wish you should judge your department. I think it's also appropriate to consider your ethical duties to the board as an institution and as other board members. So Amy talked in the previous session in some detail about the requirements to do in meetings. But beyond that, I think citizens expect you to follow the spirit of that law and actively trust. Can you actively, really actively, in your information of the public, however defined the trust is? Are you accurately representing facts? And in doing so, are you considering, are you considering whether you're telling the entire story, not leaving out a portion, not misrepresenting something by omitting certain facts that might be relevant to the decision? And how do you respect those who have different opinions? I think if you've been elected to this office, you believe you've been known as a government sovereign or things happen where things get done as the closest interaction that most folks have with their clients. It's also the closest interaction anybody can have with those disagreements. So how can you, in 2021, disagree with this approach?
Yeah, it's the loss. It's going in and out all day.
How do you disagree with that citizen? Use trust in the word deeds of the Lord or your hearing? I think that's a similar question to consider. And it's more of an answer to that question. I think it's connected to the idea of the office being held above you as a person. It will have a health and safety. You know that term, Cam? Last thing, I think the department are taking to your office and voting in office itself and its duty to represent the public and be technically competent and actively engaged in civil action. Alright, so we're going to move on now to a series of questions and I hope you have these. This is concerning a hypothetical scenario in Carolina County. So this is a fictional county that I hope is going to illustrate some of these issues. Let me pull this up one second. Alright, so you should have this in order, not community. This is, it was in the chapter there, it's also accessible in the course materials, I believe. But I'll read it again, just so we're all on the same page. So, Carolina County has five county commissioners, each elected from a separate district. For several years, the board has considered various proposals to develop or use a 150-acre tract of vacant land with the county. The tract is located close to an interstate highway in a largely rural portion of the county in District Four. The counties failed in through some sense to convey the tract to a manufacturing firm or economic development purposes. And the two-sit solid waste line surplus had been approved. The existing solid waste line fill is located in District Five and has estimated five years of capacity remaining. It's currently operated by county under a free factory number of the county. The board has hired an independent consultant, wasting company, to recommend an investment at four for disposing of solid waste. So despite some significant community opposition in the area of county, Tarik County has made plans to expand this line fill and accept solid waste concerning jurisdictions. Tarik County has indicated that it's acceptable to use solid waste. So property evaluations in Districts Four and Five are quite low compared to valuation in the other three districts. Collectively, between District Four and Five, they only collectively get 20% of the property taxes. Residents in District Four with vacant land is or are opposed to landfill expansion residents in District Five are opposed to new ones. So I'd like to pose this question to you, and I'd be interested if anyone would like to get a response. So residents of District Four and Five did not elect commissioners one, two, or three. Should those commissioners consider the use of District Four and Five residents in deciding to have four? And if so, how? If anybody wants to pick a comment on it, feel free to go to the chat box first and
Well, I'll come in. I want to ask you a question directly. Will you ever be elected as a county commissioner or a county commissioner or the county? Which justifies that you should consider the lead for District Four and Five.
Thank you, Commissioner, gentlemen. I think that's right, and I think that this question asks you to consider two things. Who is the relevant public for purposes of this decision? And I think a good way to think about it is the entire county. Even though you might be elected from a specific district, it's important to remember that as a county commissioner, you represent the entire county. I think that's right. Also, to consider, I'd like to best to understand and solicit the views of those who might not have elected. And that can be challenging sometimes. That can be challenging to interact with those that you don't perhaps have a direct relationship with. Anybody else offering or considering first suggestions on how to interact with folks in Districts Four and Five in this hypothetical scenario?
Can you hear that one?
He says good. It was too loud, wasn't it?
A bit.
So Connor, there's a lot of comments in the chat box. There's a lot of... So we're getting a lot of that feedback. I haven't seen anything yet that says how you gather input from...
Yeah. Public hearings, day-to-day interactions, I think that's right. Work with those representatives. I think those are all legitimate strategies here to try to interact and solicit views from folks that might not have elected you. So thank you. Thank you for your feedback on that one.
So, and also, we have, this is where courage is key. We talk to their district commissioners, we go to those other districts, talk to people, answer your phone, answer your emails, day-to-day interactions. Talk to the other commissioners from those districts. So it seems like there's a consensus that you stay in touch with everybody.
Right, and Commissioner Napp said you have to represent all citizens. You can hold open meetings in those areas and get out and meet with the citizens and perhaps hold a town hall meeting, so to speak. So I think that's a great ingredients. So, let's move on. There's a little bit more here in this scenario, and I'd like to ask you after we read the next portion. Commissioners one and two, your friends, and the pair agrees to take private phone call to take a unified position on this matter. Commissioner one says, look, we've got to stick together. This land is worthless. It's not in my district or yours. You and I both know that folks in our districts care about costs, period. And we were not elected to subsidize vacant land because of few remote health concerns. We need to find a cheap and efficient way to store up our trash, and any consultant we hire needs to know that before handing a report for us. Commissioner two replies, well, I couldn't agree more. Commissioner, we've got to make sure that consultant knows what this community thinks is important, and I don't think we should hesitate to pass along the views of our constituents. He is a friend, and I will call to make a few suggestions for the work force. Is this appropriate for Commissioners one and two to call wasting company to communicate the views of their constituents and remind the consultant that costs are critical to
It was inappropriate for commissioners wanting to not allow addition of this one. And I think they had responsibility to, for the county and the public, to keep information among all board members, not to them, because they're not state of the board.
Thank you. It is, I think it is that kind of reporting that can cause distrust among local members. And obviously, a lot of their may have been the two that did constitute the board, but it should have worked for them to engage in that kind of behavior.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments of someone in the chat box? And I like the suggestion, excuse me, from Commissioner Williams in Johnson County. He said, there should be a clear protocol through which the consultant gains public feedback. It should not allow one or two commissioners to steal the input. So that's a helpful consideration, and perhaps working with third-party consultants here. So thank you. Any other comments? Alright. And I think, someone said this is, they should be working as a team. And I think that that's a helpful, helpful framework to consider here.
I think this is one of those situations that we don't, they come out of all the times, and then it is our responsibility of the board members. And the image that we're attracting the public in this circle would not be considerably...
Thank you, thank you. I think, I didn't miss what he said at the end, but I think that the trust in the fellow board members there is essential, which translates, as we've talked about, translates to the public's trust in you and your ability to govern effectively. So let's move on to our next one. So Commissioner four, he has the vacant, he actually has a vacant land located in his district, is strongly opposed and brings side to the lines. And he holds a district listing session and attends with Commissioner five. And Commissioner five doesn't like to be on the losing side in each. Commissioners four and five agree publicly at the listing session that they're going to vote against any items supported by Commissioners one and two, regardless of the subject matter, until Commissioners one and two agree to oppose landfill expansion or creation. Is it appropriate for Commissioners four and five to make such a public commitment or to carry out that sort of legislative strategy? How would you go about that? And another comment from Commissioner Williams, "That type of non-way or highway ultimatum is not helpful in a board setting. None of us gives our way all of the time, and if that's said, at least, they need it publicly." I suppose, I suppose that's a same, same path there. Right, and so I think this question asks you to consider a few things. Is this good representation for your constituents, or is this across the line? And how does this square with your duties to the board? When is compromise appropriate and isn't in fact warranted here? Even if your constituents, uh, you know, may oppose landfill expansion or landfill, uh, community landfill siding, how do you work with those that might support it? So thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate you going through. We have a little bit of extra time, and I have one more. There was, there was one more question there that sort of didn't make its way into the board document, and that's my call. But I'll read it and pose it to you. So Wasting Company reports to the board that the cheapest option is expanding the District Five landfill and extending the franchise agreement with the current operating with Dunk Inc. The next cheapest option is to create a new landfill. And the most expensive option is transporting the county's solid waste to Tarquay County, so the neighboring county. It's the most expensive, expensive option. But remember that the residents of Tarquay County were generally opposed to that. Is it appropriate to consider, as a Carolina county commissioner, to consider the views of those in another county who were generally opposed to the landfill making this decision? Or instead, should cost be the primary driver? How would you handle that? Does anybody want to comment on that? And I like Commissioner Williams' comment, "As a world back fan, I support moving all of our waste to Tarquay County. My employer wouldn't like that too much, but I like the joke." And there's not necessarily a right or wrong answer to this question, um, but I think it presents a challenge in that you might consider the use of those or work with a neighboring commission to get on some sort of agreement. But again, it's about your consideration of your public, the public that's at play here.
Connor, I got some interesting comment in the, uh, in the chat box, um, about working with the neighboring board commissioners. Um, do you see those kinds of things very often?
I think it's possible, um, and it might be one of the ways, and I think that's right. Commissioner, this cooperation with other counties is essential. They're not going anywhere, right? Um, they're going to do that, and so I think cooperating and having open discussion and open dialogue is the key, um, decision-making process that you need to follow. And Commissioner Williams says, "I generally defer to neighboring county supports on what is best for their county unless it adversely impacts my county." That's an important consideration as well. All right, well, thank you, thank you for going through that, and I appreciate your participation on it, and I hope it's helpful to just think about some of these things in an abstract way, and I hope you think about the relevant considerations involved if you have an issue that comes up down the line. All righty, so Amy and I think we were going to turn it over to you at this point to talk about compliance and enforcement of standards in codes of ethics, perhaps. Um, and I think we were going to take a break at, um, 11:15, is that correct? So we've got a little bit of time.
So why don't we, Connor, I think that I have my next two new sections, so maybe we can get through those and then take a break, if that sounds okay?
Uh, we can do that, we can do that.
Great, and, and thank you so much. And just some context, because you may, as you're seeing, as a new commissioner, and you watch all of these commissioners that I have seen, they've been around for a while, and they're joining us back here again, and conversely, you know, Commissioner, we've done this before, sometimes we get that question, and it's one of the ones from that sort of set, that statutory reminder, and then Connor told you at the beginning, I think that the law changed back around 2011, or I think it was 2009, but in a timeline that required that local governments needed to have some resolution or some type of policy in place to provide for a code of ethics. And it also required that every time that you were either elected or appointed, that you go through this local government ethics training. Um, so US commissioners, right, they're going through this now, and then each subsequent time, if you get elected, so you were up for election, and two years before you're in, within 12 months of that reelection or for elected, 12 months of that appointment, you will need to go through the ethics training each time. So just a reminder, and also one other sort of contextual piece, that some of you may serve on state boards, you may have, or say, going to county, um, here from the college board, or maybe some type of board that is subject to a state ethics training that is separate and apart. So even if you go through that state ethics training and are part of your state service, you still need to do this local government ethics training, and they're two separate trainings. So just a reminder, as we're talking, uh, in this section about compliance and enforcement of standards and codes of ethics, and then Connor, you want to go on to the next slide, that would be great. I just realized I was trying to click, and I'm not, I'm not a virgin. So compliant obligations. Under state law, the co-compliance is voluntary. Um, so I think we saw a question in the chat earlier that said, um, first of all, are all boards, all appointments subject to codes of ethics? So you are required at the governing board to have code of ethics, and US individual commissioners are subject to the rules that are in that now. So US commissioners are going off to serve on other boards that you need to serve in that, under that code of that capacity. Are other individuals who are appointed under that, um, it's going to require you as a governing board. Um, and then how are things enforced? Well, again, it's completely voluntary, um, unless failure to comply violates a separate permission of the law, but, let me look under there for her. But remember, right, that this is something that Connor has been talking about quite a bit, and this is this area of yes, can you, and yes, should you, right? So even though there are certain things that are technically clearly in violation of the law, and that violation of codes of ethics and left against the law, it's a voluntary compliance, remember the public perception, the power of the media, and all the duties that were just discussed, so that this is a broader discussion and broader context of what should you do whether technically you can and are not. Um, so let's move on, though, to, you know, if there are deemed to be violations of the code of ethics that were, have, what are some of the things that potentially can happen? And I know Connor and Freida is also on the chat, and others, these questions come up a lot, like, there are violations, in my opinion, of our code of ethics, what can we do? Well, number one, there is the potential for a censure by your board, so that's an action that a board, the majority of your board could take, um, that the governing board may cast a resolution essentially expressing dissatisfaction with a board member's conduct, right? So it has practical implications for publicly, the majority of your board is taking an action to publicly censure and say that you are publicly not favorable of the actions that have been taken by an individual board member, um, but it is legally significant. So again, that is an option that you as a governing board can take, from a majority of your standpoint, to censure an individual or non-mineers. In addition, other than censure, often you'll get a question, though, is if there's unethical conduct on the part of a board member, what can this board do? And that, that's very, it's a very tricky question, it's a very relevant question, right? Because you as a board, you're working together, you're trying to make sure that you have public trust, you're working publicly, and if you have the feeling that there's one individual on your board that potentially has, um, engaged in unethical conduct, what can you do? Can you record it? The ability of your board, can that individual be recalled? No, there is no general authority to recall members of your board, right? It's what we say, that's an election, so the next election, in the public's uses to, um, basically recall that member, they can use it for the election, but there's no general authority, aside from the election, to recall a member of your board for unethical conduct. And another thing that may be heard about, and I can tell you that Freida in particular has done, um, some excellent writing on this, um, she has done some blogs on the Hill's Canon, and she's referred to there, giving more information. There is this, um, there is somewhat old common law idea of abolition, right? And the idea that it's possible to, you know, the board, go through a process to remove a board member, um, through this common law process and procedure. Um, and exactly there is a condition, um, when a board member goes through this process, and this is something that comes to mind here.
That is why I'm there, so that it may be high sales. I'm saying whoever just said, "There is a certain process or part," and I bet it's there, I'd say, since December. I know that makes you a bit of a, uh, very high standard, so it is something that is, um, very high standard, and, um, it's, it's a little jacked, you know? And those, um, the, um, there it goes again, they're not speaking that we should, okay, or not, we should, yes, that is, and just know, that, that question arise, you know, if it relates to something that happens with folks in this community or, um, that, of course, they can move right into the law and ask us that right standard, and, um, go from there, so on. So that's just something to keep in mind, and now let's go, a little, I mean, give us time, um, to stop reckoning, to go, but I think, okay, okay. Let's, um, talk now, before we go into our break, one exception that is going to explain to you at a high level, what are your requirements, your legal requirements, as a member of your board, and you are now on your board, right? And number one, you've been elected to conduct the business of the public, so you fundamentally, as a part of that position and as an elected official, you have a duty to vote, right? You have to, subject to, we talked about, um, the county statutes or North Carolina general statutes, you can see that's chapter 153A, that the county governing board, as members of that board, you have legal duties to vote, right? That's actually, that's how you engage, and that's how you do the business of the public, right? So that's fundamentally your first legal requirement and duty, unless, unless, and this is, this is generally the case in so many of these, um, statements that we make about, or, uh, statements, unless a statutory exception lies, so unless there is a specific statutory exception that says in these instances, you should not vote, you must vote, and that is your fundamental legal requirement as a member of the board to engage in the business of the public. Um, and there is no general authority to recuse, right? So you can just say, "Oh, this topic makes me feel uncomfortable, oh, this is something that I've had in conversation," that it comes up from a legal standpoint. There's no just general authority to say, "I'd like to refuse myself, I don't want to vote, that I feel uncomfortable," unless there's a statutory exception lies. So again, none of them, really, the logic of the perception, I agree, foundational requirements, foundational, you gotta, you need to, unless there's a statutory exception. So let's look at some resources, and I'm going to, several questions about whether these materials will be available, and absolutely will, and maybe it'll be asked questions, but let's talk about can you vote, and let's vote through some scenarios, okay? Hopefully, this will be a major, and help you consider some of these questions of whether or not you can vote. So first, does a matter involve, and let's look through our chart review. Number one, and as you can see, when you get into can you vote, a lot of these scenarios are very specific to land use, um, the regions and planning area of the law. Otherwise, we talked about, there's no general, just what's usual, but it's some of these very specific land use con- concepts, and again, it's moving toward to, to kind of part of your county, county, or your manager, and your managing committees. Um, with regard to legislative decisions regarding mental development regulation, you have these way, um, adoptions of, or bans of zoning ordinances or tax amendments, technically legally, there is wording in the law that said you have a direct substantial and federally identified financial interest in the outcome of those very specific types of situation. There is a statutory prohibition, there's not choices, and not votes. So if you get into that situation, again, you feel like that might be an issue for you, there'd be a lot of consulting, there's currently on that. And let's go to the next. Again, here, the land use context of resuming constitution or resuming tax amendment, what does it mean to have a close familial business or other associational relationships? Okay, you have a really close familial business or other associational relationship, you will be applying for those amendments for landowner properties that may be resuming, and you cannot vote, it is a statutory prohibition. And at the bottom, you're probably, or wondering, what does that mean to have a close familial relationship? And you can see, it is specific, it's a statute that includes spouse, errand child, brother sister, grandchild, um, and maybe who's definitely in our relationship. So those are specific situations, if that allows, if you're in that context, that you cannot, it's not, um, so then, let's move on to our next, right?
And Amy, there's a, um, a question, you know, you might have mentioned, what is a legislative decision, um, in this context? And I think that the examples that are on the screen are good examples of, like, say, decision and adoption of zoning ordinance, or into the zoning ordinance or something. Along those lines, it's more technically defined, I believe, in chapter 160D, um, which, as I mentioned in the chat, is just been adopted, really, um, and doesn't change everything related to land use, but puts it in a new place. Um, it has changed some things, for instance, this, this close familial relationship, that didn't used to exist, um, that was not previously prohibited, so it's an expansion of the, of the interest of prohibitions here, um, we have previously been, just like a decision or something like adoption of zoning ordinance, or something along those lines.
So thank, thank you, Connor. I think for the new numbers, making sure they understand that what this way, a decision doesn't refer to the general assembly, um, it's something that has the effect of law, right, at the local level.
Exactly, and you press it, that's it. Please, thank you.
And, 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 next one, my next, legislative context of, of making the law, right, making, um, now, can amendment to taxes, so legislator from the process, but not the general family, right? That's exactly right, so thank you for that clarification. Um, okay, let's look to a few more examples of, um, situations in whether or not you can vote, um, and when there are actually some statutory prohibitions to vote in. So now we just drop that other slate, um, kind of in enacted or making laws or minimum level. You also have quasi-conjugal hearing at the local level at times, right? For certain situations, um, as you can see, maybe a prominent, um, there may be a deal of personal decisions, so there are certain times where you are going to have quasi-conjugal hearing, there may be very specific parameters, there may, it could be hearing, there's going to be evidence, there's going to be witnesses, and you are going to have the annual level of that. If you have, as you can see, a fixed opinion prior to the hearing, um, if you had, um, this, this exclamation, you have communication with individuals that are in a part, individual parties that are in a part from the proceedings, that close familial and business or other relationship with an affected person for financial interest in that. So this is a, this is essential, right, kind of, I mean, title of hearing, and you are going to be...
to be, um, essentially liable based on reasons that you cannot participate or vote. And again, I'll just encourage you, this is a lot correct, and a couple of words is a lot of questions. That's when you're going to want to talk to your family, to your manager, you're not currently, and you don't have to be, it's a little easier just to work in an easier situation where this can come up, and you have any concerns, and you talk to the folks that you have, or call them, you must be helping talk through. Um, and in addition, in the public contract areas, in these are the specific areas, there's statutory notions, um, if you would derive a direct benefit, a direct benefit, or your spouse would derive a direct benefit from the contract, then you cannot vote. So if you have, there's somebody who's intentionally not being involved, if you have a neighbor, if you have someone that you know, that is not what's provided for, that it's a direct benefit, and you or your spouse specifically would derive on your public contract, then you cannot participate. And then the catch-all, right? So what does that, that means a lot of times for potentially some rare area, when you may be concerned about what do you look at? So if you don't fit under those categories, that has a statutory prohibition, which you cannot vote, in all other matters, if there's a financial interest that you have in the matter, or the matter involves your own official conduct, then you may, you may excuse from voting. And again, this is when you're going to want to consult the experts that you have there at your disposal at the local level, to talk through what that can look like, and maybe that's something that you bring before the board, but, um, those are, that's just sort of hierarchy of how that works. Um, and let's talk now, so now we're in this bit of higher, right? What does it mean to have a financial interest in the matter? So again, this is may, may excuse from voting, if the matter involves your own financial interest. And as is though not helpful so many times, what does that mean if not specifically defined in statute? Um, so what do you look at there in having this conversation with, um, or experts at the local level? Are, it's sort of continuum, right? If this is something that you believe may involve your financial interest, how many people may be affected, what is the extent either positive or negative of the financial interest, and what is the likelihood that this action is going to result in impact? Um, so kind of the continuum of whether or not you should vote, again, it's a may, a permission, it's, you know, it affects a lot of people, versus a former only, if there's a nominal impact, this is a significant impact, if it's a low likelihood, this may, of course, a strong likelihood, because these are some of the factors to take into account when making this decision or community consideration. And I can think before we get a little into the break, Connor, show you this one last one. Um, and the other aspect of that was whether or not getting calls or going on official conduct, right? So that forces continuum of financial interest. The second time where you may excuse from voting, if it's your own official conduct, um, the statute, again, looks like financial is to not specifically define official conduct, but just to give you some potential ideas, um, voting to censure, it's your own conduct, right, and censure a member, and there is an example, um, or voting to excuse a member from voting on that, or if it's your financial interest or your memory is censured, right, it's your own official conduct, then, um, that is a time maybe excuse from voting. Um, so they need to assess the context of times when maybe excuse, when shall be excuse, or shall not vote, this is statute. And as you can see, context-wise, they're very limited, and so fundamentally, the bottom line is that you have to be, you vote generally should and will vote, um, except in limited circumstances, which you should conduct discussion at the local level to, to make sure that you're exploring all of these things that you just talked about. Um, and then I'll turn it back over to Connor.
Hey, Tina, this is supposed to hold that. I'm interested, there are a lot of questions, um, in the chat box, so perhaps we'll go ahead and take a break, and then when we come back, uh, we'll use the break time to sort of go through and see what's there, um, and then maybe address those briefly before we move on, uh, past the subject. But let's take a break, um, and let's come back at eleven thirty, um, and we'll continue with the next hour of our session.
Are you ready to say yes? Are you ready to say until?
Eleven forty, it's already here.
Just hang right.
I'm going to go back and twitlock to that other session, and I'll, for a little while at least, okay? Uh, because I've got the files.
Got you.
Um, and I'll be in.
Do we have, um, a lot to cover? No, I think there's one thing that you have to agree, talk about, um, some contracts and codes, and then you've got, um, you've got to talk about the last, what was the start of last, at law. If you want to just do the, the copy of what you want to do live.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I just gave.
This last field, I have to wait over usually, but I mean, you can take, if you can re-say us, come back if you need to. Say, I'll shoot you by the end, I'm not shooting you. The man, why are we in this meeting?
I'm not shooting.
He used to have a ride after noon, so I don't know if he's in a different position than I would.
Yeah.
And if one of them, um,
I think, uh, cities, if, they were getting the word out, having shots, they've got to give, I thought word was sort of, this guy had, that they couldn't get extra shots, given they were not having any interest in people wanting the shots. I don't know if they can legally give the shots they have to a phase that is not approved by the governor or not, I rather doubt it, but I think.
Has they, that group, one, two, three? Each of them is what I expect. And anybody for sixty-five years, right?
Well, that's like, I don't know, my response is, it's like, we'd license my screen a little longer, type.
The, you know, people don't want to be in a future, all raises by the, the, I think, I sent an email out, and that's something I have to be, for this start, I have to.
Well, say that, we, I, the person called me, said, uh, he felt like that we ought to get the word out for them, but I'm just going to call them and see if they have, and I'm watching.
Why, I'm pretty young, so it's going to be, yeah.
And he's recommending the radio.
Yeah.
Because I've got one problem this week, complaining that a person couldn't get a shot. And they were seventy-five years old, but that's really slowed down.
I know, I remember the guy that get hurt, because she's caretaker, we care, but she's not, absolutely, she's not sixty-five.
He is, he's sixty-five.
She's sixty, you know, he thought he is.
Yeah.
Sixty-eight or five.
I just assumed that the caretaker would be allowed.
I gave it to her as last Tuesday, right?
Hi, Amy, this is Connie Moore. Uh, how are you? I got a call from, I said this this morning, uh, saying that you all had a number of the COVID shots, and that you were not getting much interested, interest in people wanting to get them. I want to reply to my neighbor, because the caller asked me, no, he didn't ask me, he, he told me that it was our responsibility to get that board out for you all, you all having trouble, so we've been glad and everybody's like, we came, uh, this is the first.
Yeah.
I know you've been calling for sure. Have you put it on the radio? I'd say that would be a public announcement, that when that comes out in market, you might get some from that area, but.
You sure didn't?
Okay, but I may not take it yet. They are struggling to get, and they're all, they're making calls if they have free time, not to get response.
You can get a list of names to the elections at age group that you can call. Because I mean, that's the record.
You're thinking sort of about age, given.
Yeah, sixty-five and none of them. Because I think that's what it was, where they'd charge sixty-five.
I'd love that person.
Yeah.
And somehow, we're looking back.
I'm streaming in the south, sort of, I'm there. I don't even know how to do it, it's sad, so, learning what they're doing here. If it's just, I'm going to come back and move it, it's, it's, now. And so, do they need to check in again, or is it, it's okay? But they checked in, okay, okay.
Thank you all.
All right, well, I see you moved some people back, so let's go like that, and we've started with our second hour, um, if you can see my screen now. And there were some, sort of fact-specific questions about zoning in particular, maybe some other, um, let's, if, if you don't mind, if you ask those of us in breakout sessions later on, we're happy to go through this and, and, uh, talk about those in, in perhaps more detail, but I want to make sure that we can cover all of the content here. Um, so, so feel free to continue to ask questions, we'll go interact, but some of the more fact-specific ones, might address at the end. All righty, so, let's talk now about self-benefiting in public contracting, and in particular, we're going to talk about General Statute fourteen H two thirty-four. Now, if you want to pull that up on your computer, feel free to do so. Um, it's a little bit of a technical statute, a little bit complex, but it's helpful sometimes to have the statute, uh, to take a look at, but we're going to be talking, uh, in particular about fourteen two three four A one. And this statute is one of the primary legal restrictions in state law that prevents elected officials from benefiting from a public contract between a unit that they serve, that you serve, and somehow receiving a benefit as, as a member or as the, the private beneficiary of that contract. So let's talk about that in more detail. I'm going to discuss this prohibition by going through what attorneys would call the elements of an offense, because this is a criminal statute, and so to be liable criminally, uh, you've got to demonstrate that you've met each element of the offense. So fourteen two thirty-four A one applies to anyone involved first, who makes or administers a contract, a public contract. What does that mean? So it means a public official that's involved in the contracting process in some way. So folks that are on the governing board are generally always involved in making or administering the contract, even if they don't vote on that specific contract. And we know that public units all the time, counties and unions, lots of contracts, that, um, they're, that they, the board might itself, might not vote on. But because a public officer has, a public official, county commissioner, has the authority to govern the unit's response, that is the administration of the contract. For instance, a governing one might vote to initiate litigation or terminate a contract. Um, having that type of authority means, under the statute, arguably, that governing board members are always involved in making or administering contracts, even if they haven't approved that specific contract in a vote. Now, when you think about other folks that are involved in making or administering contracts, certainly other local employees are involved, so folks who draw specifications or release specifications for a contractor, or involved in signing off on pay applications. So making or administering a contract, that element of this offense should be interpreted quite broadly. But for your purposes, for governing board members, remember, you're basically always involved in making or administering public contract in which your unit is.
I am.
All right, so you're involved in making or administering public contracts. The law prohibits you, fourteen two thirty-four A one, from receiving a direct benefit. Now, it also prohibits you or your spouse from receiving a direct benefit. Now, how do we know what a direct benefit is? Well, the statute spells that out, defines a direct benefit. And it defines a direct benefit as occurring if you or your spouse, I'll say that again, you or your spouse owns ten percent or more of the county counterparty under contract with the county. So let's say you have an LLC, uh, your, your, uh, spouse owns twenty percent of that LLC, and they enter into a public contract, that's considered, with the unit that you serve, that's considered a direct benefit under the statute. A direct benefit also separately arises if you or your spouse derives any income or commission directly from the contract. So say that you're, even if you don't own the counterparty, the legal entity, uh, stay or hire directly as an individual, uh, if they derive any income or commission directly from the public contract, that too is a direct benefit under the statute. Third, a direct benefit arises if you or your spouse acquires property. So we know that counties all the time have surplus property, you might auction it off or sell it in a certain way, uh, that's, that's mandated under state law. But when you or your spouse acquires property, in a surplus property disposal, for instance, they're acquiring property under that, under a public contract with the county. So if those two elements are met, and we know that governing board members, that it's pretty much always meant that you're making or administering contract, if there's a direct benefit to you or your spouse, well, look out, because you've just committed a class one misdemeanor under North Carolina law. In addition, the contract is void. How do we know that it's void? The statute says so. Says that the contract, your intem- violation of the statute is void. And then that means that expenditures made under that contract are unlawful expenditures of public funds, and so the consequences of this can be quite broad. So I've gone through that analysis without discussing certain exceptions that exist to this general rule under state law. And I've done that, because I want you to always consider whether your conduct is prohibited in the first instance, um, before asking whether an exception applies. Why is that? Because these exceptions under state law are narrow, and they shouldn't be relied upon without consulting counsel. Um, if, if you're relying on one of these exceptions, you're putting both yourself at risk of criminal prosecution, and you're putting your unit at risk of entering into a void contract. And so if you have a question, or you, you see these things, a direct benefit potentially arising, um, stop asking a question before getting yourself in hot water. So let's talk about what some of these exceptions are. So the exceptions to those rule include contracts between a public agency and a bank or regulated utility. So the exceptions to those will include contracts between a public agency and a bank or regulated utilities, so between the county and bank or the, the utilities, doesn't come up a lot. But say, for instance, some grant, for some reason, the public official owned more than ten percent of one of those entities and that entity was under contract with the unit, that would be a problem under the statute. That would be a direct benefit. Another exception is in condemnation cases. So let's say you, as a public official, have some property that the county is going to condemn. Um, and the county agrees to pay pursuant to the judgment, uh, agrees to pay a certain amount of money in exchange for that property. Well, by accepting that payment for conveying that property, the public official isn't going to violate the statute. It's an exception to this rule. A third is for the employment of a spouse of a public official. Um, the statute accepts employment of, of, of public officials that are elected officials' spouses. And so even if a spouse is employed by a, a county, for instance, um, this says by a spouse receiving that, uh, income under a contract, for instance, that's not going to violate fourteen two thirty-four A one. The fourth is, uh, public assistance payments made to public officials. And the most common, and you might have heard of this before, uh, that comes up, is, is the small jurisdiction exception. Now, if you look at the statute, it doesn't say small jurisdiction exception, but it talks about certain jurisdictions, uh, that, that might be eligible here. So first, it applies to counties that do not have an incorporated municipality with a population greater than fifteen thousand. Some of you might be from those counties. Now, how do we measure that population? It's measured on the most recent federal decennial census. Now, until the results of the twenty-twenty census are finalized, um, we're still going off the old numbers, but just beware that some of those numbers might change. And so, uh, whereas you might have been eligible to rely on that exception beforehand, uh, if those numbers change and go up in this upcoming census, you might have an issue. So a contract that would otherwise be prohibited here might be allowed in those jurisdictions in certain circumstances. So, um, a contract between the, the county and a public official, for instance, um, might be acceptable only if you go through a set of procedural steps. So first, the, the contract has to be less, for payments of less than forty thousand dollars in a twelve-month period. And if the payments are for medical services, for instance, as statute states, so a doctor, for instance, is on the county commissioner, is providing, uh, the, the medical services to the county, that's twenty thousand dollars. So assuming that the contract falls within that scope, the governing board has to follow a detailed set of procedures to meet the requirements of the exception. Um, failing to do that means that the exception doesn't apply and the contract's void and you've committed a, a criminal misdemeanor. So again, consult your attorney and be very cautious before relying on this. But in, in short, the procedural requirements are, are these. The contract has to be approved at a regular board meeting, in an open session, can't be a closed session. The official with a potential conflict, the direct benefit, can't participate in the discussion or in any way vote, can't vote on it. And that was noted in that duty to vote section that Amy mentioned, sir, that exception duty to vote statute you remember a few minutes ago, right? So in the contract, in addition to that, that refraining from participation or voting has to be noted in the annual audit of the unit. In addition, the unit has to vote in a, quote, conspicuous place. So for instance, on the courthouse door or wherever you meet, a list of all of the officials with whom the unit has contracted in the past twelve months and the amounts of goods or services purchased from those individuals under this exception. So again, you've got to rely, you've got to go through that analysis, meet all of those exceptions in order to get into the context of your unit. And even if, even if you qualify legally for the exception again, you have to consider whether it's ethically appropriate. Human, uh, serving, that's a separate question. Or, or only unethical for to work behind the scenes to gain support from other board members for a contract from which they will benefit. Um, so there is a separate statute and that's in fourteen, uh, two thirty-four, um, eight-three. And I'm not going under that detail, but essentially, if you are, you, if, if you are going to receive a direct benefit, this statute also. Cause these are common and you might have seen them before, they might come up in your service as a county commissioner. All right, so a county commissioner also serves on the board directors of the nonprofit or museum. Using this scheme to work from the county tip on museums, arts, construction, permitting, or county visits, the request comes before the board commissioner's support consideration. So is it ethical for the commissioner to participate in these discussions and to vote on a grant of a board? What do you all think? Feel free to unmute yourself. There's no question, no, this is not ethical.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, he's not there. I'm not, I'm not answering me. I'm not going to be this far, this far. Can you mute it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were muted. Okay.
And, yeah. We'll do it off. Um, yeah, so, so, right, so this is, uh, this is in our formula, where we're thinking, is it legal or is it not? We have to analyze those questions. I can't really tell you whether it's ethical or illegal. This is an inspiration that you'll have to be tracking in this space. Perhaps my critical question is, is it legal? So we have the same question here, is it legal for the commissioners to participate in the discussion and vote on the funding of a board? And yes, the commissioner's on the board, I'd say county commissioner. So I think that Commissioner Hayes has got the right answer for new year of her county. She said, yeah, yes, they are benefiting financially. And if there are accounting appointments at that board, a senior's likely for, um, isn't it their obligation for them to participate? Yes, and in fact, assuming that by their service on a nonprofit museum, they're not receiving any compensation from that nonprofit, they're not receiving any sort of benefit from this contract, there's no element, there's no, that is, they're getting a direct benefit under the statute. They're in fact required to vote, they're required to vote, they have a legal duty to vote under the duty to vote statute. And they're not excused, uh, by the mere appearance, uh, of, of impropriety here. But this might be a situation in which you could bring this before your board and explain what's going on. Um, and this also brings up a related, uh, question and related issues. So service on a nonprofit board, as I mentioned, is not necessarily a financial conflict. Remember, under that fourteen two thirty-four analysis, we're talking about direct benefit. And it's defined in various specific ways. It's defined as a minimum percent or more of the counterparty, well, nonprofit typically doesn't have stock, considering the move stock in a, in a nonprofit usually. Um, or receiving income or condition. Not to go into that here. And so there's no financial conflict under that statute, but there's still, you might consider, over the course of your service as a county commissioner, that there are potential future conflicts. Let's imagine that there's a legal or financial dispute. You've got a duty by service, by virtue of your service on the nonprofit board to that organization. You also have a duty to serve the county. It's difficult to serve both well. In the instance, if there's a dispute over the terms of funding or something like a dispute that arises. And that's not good to discourage you from, uh, serving on nonprofit boards, but to, to dispute, these are the types of conflicts that can arise. We've locked up your duties to fellow board members earlier. How would you reconcile that in giving a dispute between a nonprofit? How would you keep confidential information? If, if information was given to you and you're asked to the nonprofit board member, how would you keep that confidential on the public side and vice versa? So these are things to think about, um, in addition to the fourteen two thirty-four analysis, uh, that I was talking about just a moment ago. So there's a question instead, um, what if you were the president of a nonprofit and not serving there as a commissioner? So if you're an employee of the nonprofit, that you can get into, uh, more complicated scenarios situations of whether you're receiving income or permission. There aren't really cases that set up what that is, um, what that might be, but you could make an argument, I think, um, that your salary is in some way supported by that, uh, that appropriation. And there might, and if that's not the case, I don't think it'd be an issue here. Um, but that could be an issue depending on specific facts on your fourteen two thirty-four. All right, so let's move on, uh, a little bit. Our next scenario, we're going to ask you the same questions again. We're talking about a family contracting scenario. So a county commissioner's sister and brother-in-law, those two folks collectively own fifty-one percent of a local construction company. The county is considering awarding a two-point-three-million-dollar building renovation contract. And the company is the lowest responsive responsible bidder on the job. Is it ethical for the commissioner, your sister and brother-in-law collectively own fifty-one percent of that company, to vote on the award of the contract? And just a little background, um, for building, construction, or repair contracts that are greater than five-hundred thousand dollars, that contract must be approved, must be voted on by the governing board, the union. And so, um, here, they would have to vote under the bidding statutes. The standard award in that statute is lowest responsive responsible bidder. And so here, they seem to be the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the county to turn around, write a warrant to this contract, contract. So those folks are saying it is not ethical, gives the appearance of improper credit. He should recuse himself completely to avoid any reception problems. Okay. President, uh, Commissioner Harris says it is not you or your spouse, you can participate. So again, here, I think this is where the legal analysis has to inform your action. So is it legal for the commissioner to vote on the award of the contract to the company? So Freda said you must participate. So yes, it is legal, and not only that, assuming the commissioner receives no income or commission from this contract, the commissioner must vote? Must vote. And so the sister and brother-in-law, remember, that fourteen two thirty-four applies only to you or your spouse, right? And so there might be other family members involved and it might go down the hole. Uh, but in this scenario, you would have to vote on this contract. Now, that presents issues, so many local laws of ethics require that board members avoid the appearance of impropriety and get exercise of their official duties. So let's say you have instincts, and we just went through it, that you've got a legal duty to vote. All right? But if you're required by law to vote, how would you go about that? How would you manage the perception here that you have a conflict of interest? Does anybody want to comment on that?
Well, I would do this at the beginning of the report, specifically state that the relationship between the county and the public state law and requirement of voting, that's on the record in the document.
Thank you, thank you. I've heard that from any facts, this is, this is an approach. Anybody else? I mean, if you think of the law that they're able to build a profit and that if they're able to make, they might be a profit, but never. Oh, that the law that you do that has to appropriate in there. I think that's right, I think that's right. And I think the, the county attorney can light a file of all here, um, by having, you know, legal analysis that informs the vote, um, in, in open session and saying that a public disclaimer, a judiciary exemption. I think, I think all of those are, are right. Um, because here, you're required, you gotta do the vote, like we mentioned, but, um, it is the case that this makes most folks uncomfortable. It means, it, it just doesn't feel, you know, that violates our, our sensitive ethics that you have a family or that's benefiting from, even if it's permissible, right? The general, the civil doesn't criminalize this. Um, it still doesn't, it doesn't mesh well with your sensitive ethics. And so I think being open and transparent about it is probably a good strategy. All right, let's, let's move on now. Can we have it, let me have it before you vote, even though if you have any, would this be a good vote? If you, uh, see, didn't, if you didn't vote, if it's a vote for.
If you're saying, what you're saying you said in that, but even that, that was the overall best, right?
Can you do another sample, you know, on that one? I, I'm not sure.
I can jump in, if you're ready. So, so there's no, uh, uh, authority to abstain. Some, for cities, if you're there and you don't vote, you can't spend the gas. And some counties have that as a policy. I'm not sure that those are actually, um, authorized, but, um, I think if, if one, one, um, so one aspect of it would be, yes, not vote and then it'll, if you have that kind of policy, it would, it would be, yes. Um, otherwise you have to, you can just not, you know, there's just no way you would really, um, assess. I'm not sure that's clear, but, um, uh, don't really, you, you don't have authority to accuse yourself and you can't abstain. So you have to, there's nothing, or just vote. That's, that's, that's exactly right, but you have to have a basis for being, uh, excused and the board has, has to have that authority to excuse us.
Right, right, so, so in that, in that vote, right, they have, absolutely. But for example, yeah, they have to look at the power basis for voting, for excuse, even if you have the other. Even if you have the other board members too, that's a great point, great point. All right, let's move along, we've got about 30 minutes left. And in that time, we're going to talk about another statute that's helpful to be aware of. And that is General Statute 133-32. If you'd like to, if you're able to pull that up, it was a bit confusing. It was kind of helpful to take a look. When you are learning about it and have questions. So what does this statute give you? So 133-32 prohibits public officials and employees from accepting certain types of gifts or favors through contractors in line 14-234. If this statute is applied, that constitutes a class one misdemeanor for an honest to be earned under law. So when does the statute apply? Well, first, it applies when a prohibited giver is involved. And if you look at the statute, you're not going to find the term that says prohibited. But if it defines those who are prohibited from giving or favors in certain contracts, and it's contracts, so you see them. So all the prohibited givers under the statute are contractors, subcontractors, or vendors who have previously been under contract with the county in the previous 12 months. Or who are currently under contract with the county. Or who is a potential future bidder on a contract. Now, the statute doesn't define who that is, it just says a contractor, subcontractor, vendor, he anticipates sitting on a contract in the future. So I think in the absence of clarity there, it's helpful to interpret that pretty broadly out of an abundance of caution for you. So let's say we have a prohibited giver. The statute also defines who is a prohibited recipient of a gift and favor from those votes. So the statute defines these individuals as public officers or employees, and you are a public officer. As one who prepares, plans, or specifies for a public contract. Or one who awards or administers public contracts. Or one who inspects or supervises construction. And so remember, I think it's appropriate to consider an elected official by virtue of your position on the governing board. Whether you vote on a contract or not, that the prohibited giver is operating on. You have authority to administer that public contract by virtue of your service on the board. And so I believe you are a prohibited recipient in some of these cases. It's helpful to think about that. So if a prohibited giver gives a gift or favor, and that should be considered anything of value, really. Statute doesn't define gift or favor, so we should think about that in a broad sense and in the traditional sense of anything without expectation of something in the in a gift or favor in a traditional sense, I should say. If this is going to get your favor to a prohibited recipient, that action constitutes a class one misdemeanor. Unless an exception applies, and we're going to talk about those in just a minute. It also is a class one misdemeanor to receive. So both votes would be guilty of a separate crime. So just mention that broad prohibition, that broad prohibition, anything, any gift or favor, anything of value essentially. And like the 14-234 exceptions, all of these exceptions should be read narrowly. I do want to make one initial point, in North Carolina, there's no blanket de minimis exception for small gifts or favors. So if you look at 133-32, just because it's one donut or a cup of coffee, or not a free cup of coffee state, I've heard it said. So just because it's small doesn't make it legal, right? And so no small item exception applies. Instead, you've got to point to these other exceptions if you've got a potentially prohibited gift or favor. And I think that answers the question that was in the chat box. So what are these exceptions? So when can a prohibited giver, so someone, say, under contract with the county, give something of value to a prohibited recipient, for instance, you? The first is for honorary debt, and the statute doesn't define what that means. And so it's important to look to the plain meaning of that term. This would be something like nominal or reasonable compensation for an order or for speaking. Let's say you're invited to speak at a symposium that's conducted by someone under contract with your unit. Accepting mileage from those folks to get to that symposium to speak or having lunch at the event where you are speaking, that might fit within the definition. Never the case interpreting that, but it's up to interpret that, you know. The second is for souvenirs and advertising items of nominal value. So let's say, for instance, that you attend a professional conference and a contractor that's under contract with your unit pays for the land rights at the conference and when you walk in, they hang you up. You have not committed a class one misdemeanor because you received a land rent or other small advertising item, let's say a pin from a contractor who's an otherwise prohibited giver. This comes up when contractors sometimes leave a box of pins, for instance, at an office. By accepting those, you're unlikely, you're likely to fall within this exception. But again, there's no definition of nominal value, so it should be interpreted quite strictly. And it's limited to advertising items and souvenirs. One other note. Your local unit might have a policy of prohibiting you from accepting these items, even though state law would allow you to accept them. And so it's important to check what policies might in place at your unit as well. The third exception to the statute comes from meals at banquets. And I don't think they were thinking about COVID-19 little pandemics when they put this in here. You know, I would love to go to a meal at banquet sometime soon. But this is not to be interpreted broadly. This doesn't mean a construction contractor coming into town and saying, hey, let's go to a meal at State House and we'll have a banquet. This should be interpreted in the following way, and this image has been used for years by schoolyard faculty. That you're sitting in the hotel wallroom, probably looks something like this. It's either too hot, too cold, you're being served chicken that you probably could make better at your own room, and there's a speaker that you'll have to listen to in order to get that chicken. You know, that's a meal at banquet, right? This is not going to a fancy dinner with a contractor. So if a contractor invites you to this type of event and pays for it, perhaps that's okay. For instance, the rubber chicken test, that's exactly right. So that's an exception to the statute. The fourth here is gifts to professional organizations. So let's say that a contractor, who is otherwise a prohibited giver, gives a gift to a professional organization, city association county commissioners. In the absence of this exception, I think you could make an argument that the prohibited giver is giving this gift to a third party that you're a member of to as a means of influencing you. Well, this exception says we're not going to worry about that. So if they're giving it to a legitimate third-party professional organization like the Association of County Commissioners, you're not going, as a gift, you're not going to violate the statute by being a member of that organization. So the last one here concerns customary gifts, that is, non-business-related customary gifts from friends and family. So the statute here recognizes that some friends or family might be involved in the contracting process. And so let's set aside potential issues under 14-234 about public contracts. But let's say you have an old friend, a friend who you knew since high school. And that friend has a habit of taking you out for lunch on your birthday each year. So let's further assume that the construction, that friend is a construction contractor that recently renovated a public building at your county. So can, in this next year, you've been elected, can this construction contractor, let's assume that they've been under contract in the previous 12 months, can they now take you out to lunch on your birthday? And pay for your lunch on your birthday? So this exception would mean that 133-32 would not criminalize that behavior in the practice of receiving customary gifts each year from a friend. But a word of caution, you can't stretch that too far. You know, an equally likely scenario is an old friend that you haven't seen in 20 years who happens to be a construction contractor, who knows you just got elected and says, hey, I would love to give you a gift or take you out to lunch and tell you more about my company and catch up a little bit. That's not a customary gift. There needs to be a standard practice, something in place that you can point to, that you have a tradition of doing. For instance, a holiday gift that you give to your family member each year. So that, in those cases, if it's customary, it's not done with the intent of influencing the contracting process presumably. And there's, now, that doesn't mean you have to accept it, but it's important that you consider whether this can be truly customary or not. All right, let's go through a few scenarios. We've still got about 20 minutes or so, we might have some time for some other questions. So again, we're Tarbeal County and Wolfpack County. Apologies to many Blue Devil County residents, but Tarbeal County's third hiring financial advisor invites a commissioner from Wolfpack County to join her for dinner during the evening local county commissioners' conference. Wolfpack County is not and has never been under contract with the financial advisor. Is it legal for the financial advisor to pay for the Wolfpack County commissioners' dinner? Why or why not? Commissioner Anderson from White County said it might have a contracting in the future. Right, so I don't think that customary exception would apply. I think that's exactly right. And I think the other problem here, as some folks noted in the chat, is that if they were to pay, right, you don't know whether they're a potential future bidder. There's some question about that. And they might be in neighboring county or rural counties, right? We don't know. They would certainly be precluded, I think, from in the future getting business if that were to happen, if they were to later intervene to a contract with Wolfpack County, this third-party financial advisor. That might then be a problem. And so to protect the commissioner and the financial advisor, it's a best practice, I think, to not accept that gift to pay for your own needs here. Because then there's no question about whether that financial advisor could do work in the future from in this county. So I think you all.
I had jumped in and asked you the question.
Sure.
Because I was going to say, I think you put a bit of a red arrow in there that it happened to be during an association annual conference, right? And just curious, and so if this were a different scenario where it was a dinner that perhaps it was a sponsorship by an entity at the conference that members were attending versus an individual being taken to dinner, would that change this scenario?
I think so, I think it would. So if we say Wolfpack, or speaking to the third-party financial advisor, it's a sponsor of this year's annual conference of this professional organization, then we're falling into that gifts to the professional organization exception. But you're right, it's a helpful distinction to note that, you know, anything outside of that conference, if we say, we're going to go to dinner now, or we're going to do something else, and that gift is given that way, that does not meet the terms of an exception under 133-32. All right, a lot to do with the financial advisors here, I don't know why. This is just in my head. So Tarbeal County's financial advisor assisted the county in two financings. As a tip of thanks, the financial advisor delivered a holiday gift basket to the county's administrative offices for the county manager within there. Thanks for putting in a good word for us with your board this year. We appreciate your business. Is it legal for the manager to accept the gift basket? Or what about one of the commissioners? Most folks are saying no, appears in the chat box. So here, I think this raises a question of whether this could be whether this can be construed as a gift to the manager or a gift to the county. And here, I think it's more likely that it's a gift to the manager, right? There's some evidence that this is a gift to an individual. As we'll talk about in a minute, it's not illegal for commissioners, excuse me, for counties or public entities to accept gifts. They do that frequently, we'll talk about that in a few minutes, perhaps. Somebody wants to sponsor a little tea that the Parks and Rec Department is putting on, and they donate money to the county or to the city to sponsor the T-shirts. But it's clear in that case, that's a gift to the county, less clear here, less clear here, right? So thanks for putting in a good word for us with your board, we appreciate your business. The customary holiday gift, I probably don't think that applies because this is not, unless that financial advisor has this practice of giving this for a family or a friend, you know, that the county manager or the board members that can be a friend, I don't think that that would apply here in law like to me. So let's do another one. So Tarbeal County is purchasing a fleet of new ambulances. A manufacturer offers to pay for one county commissioner to travel to its production facility in Henderson, Nevada, located 20 miles from the Las Vegas Strip. The manufacturer wants to provide the county the opportunity to inspect its ambulances firsthand before making such a substantial purchase. All right, is it legal for a commissioner to accept an all expenses A trip to the production facility? Why or why not? Anybody want to unmute themselves and talk about that one? I'd say that good point, good point, good question.
I'm going to go with the question that you mentioned, the question that you raised earlier about, not this question, could the teachers live in government, or have they been a client? That's what we need to be telling the listeners.
Thank you.
I have a good number of people saying that trips may be the county should pay for.
Yeah, and then saw another one that says, "Not appropriate for a commissioner anyway, this is an area of staff responsibility, your expertise."
Because the county, or I know personally, they think they'll be, unless, I think it would be better for the county to send the commissioner that went to his pay, and you know, first thing will get that, and pay this expense and not be, okay?
Right. So, this brings up an issue that I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, right? So, counties can accept gifts given to the county itself, but here, is this a gift to an individual or is it a gift to the county? It might, perhaps, maybe, be legal for, to reimburse legitimate expenses incurred for travel, but travel expenses are permissible only if, and I think people were getting at this, the county can legally pay for the travel expenses because it serves a public purpose. The county chooses to pay for that travel expense, and the expenses are reimbursable under the county's procurement policy and included ethics. And so, the other part piece of this is public perception as well. So, how would it be perceived, not only to the vendors or bidders that might be involved in this contracting process in terms of fairness, but by the public, by the public, and your expectations of how board members should act? So, I think, and Freda, Freda said that more clearly, if the county would or could pay, the company can reimburse the county for legitimate travel expenses, right? So, it could go to Henderson, Nevada, and the reason I brought that up is because if it's Henderson, Nevada, and they're going to a production facility, say they spend one night in a hotel, right, and they go to look at the ambulances, perhaps that's legitimate. What's not legitimate is entertainment expenses. What's not legitimate is meals to, you know, go to the Las Vegas Strip, anything above that. But when you get into these scenarios, it can be difficult, right, to separate that out. And even if you can separate that out, it's a theoretical matter. Practically, it's going to be very difficult to do that, and from a public perception standpoint, to make it clear to the county that this was, or to the public, that this was acceptable, and that it served a public purpose, because it does not serve a public purpose for the county to be paying for a commissioner's entertainment. So, a good rule of thumb, when in doubt about a situation, do without, right? If you have a question about whether something is either legal, I hope you would do without in that case. But even if you determine that it's legal, should you do it, right? You don't want to, you don't want to both taint the contracting process or the ability of your county to enter into certain contracts, right? Freda mentioned that this gets to the very purpose of this statute. You want to contract with the best company, not the ones who minds and dimes. So, you don't want to be under the influence by a third party that's seeking to be awarded a contract on that basis, rather than on a legitimate basis, either still or by the statute, or by contracts not subject to competitive or, say, by legitimate interests of the county. So, we have reached the end of our session, we have a few minutes left, and I think at this time we could entertain some questions if folks have them. We've got about seven minutes, do you know? The breakout rooms will be after that, and if folks want to ask questions there as well, they can do that too. I will close it there and wait for your questions. If you'd like to ask this in the chat box or unmute yourself and ask.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hey, going back to your second scenario, what about not just commissioners, but different high schools that have very degree in athletics program, and they have the authority to pick some equipment, and they go to the forest and require kids to get, like, you know, Nike's or something, and then all coaches the following year are wearing leather Nike training jackets, not just little windbreakers, but, you know, the education stuff. Is that, is that something that anyone you look into, or is that just, you know, a good video that happens in Nike?
Yeah, could you, could you let us know where you're from, which county you're in?
I'll kind of look down.
Okay. And so, would the public employees who were coaches, I guess, right, is that what you're asking about, whether it's appropriate for the-
Yeah, we don't make a lot of commissions on the county schools, we don't, you know, run them, but we get a lot of questions like that sometimes, where last year, everybody's kids got their own shoes, the coaches wore zip ups from their school everything, and then, for a training camp, they all get in the locker room, this cannot be about Nike shoes, Nike socks, Nike Airies, and it goes to the first game where very nice employer Nike jackets, and the coach, well, the principal has not been able to recommend products for all their athletes, football, basketball, baseball.
Right. I mean, potentially, so, let's go through the, let's go through the analysis, I guess, and we bring up 133-32. So, is it, that Nike would be, I'm not sure at all hotels have that contract anymore, but Nike is under-
That was a nice thing, Fred. I don't have that always, Fred. Yeah, I did kind of spill. We've got a short machine, but we had a wireless on its way, so how would it be? That would take a long, too. And I'm here.
Why can't I? And this is soon.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Live on the right side of the mountain, too.
That's when you're walking in.
Okay, yeah, I'm on lower stick, oh, yeah.
You're on our side.
That's the good side.
You're good.
Yep. Over here, they call it the backside, and over there, we call this the backside.
Okay, I think we're to item number four, is that correct? Okay, discussion and decision under request for new lights on all golf fields with exclusion of standing field. Okay, who wants to speak?
I will do the underclass.
What?
I will do the resort.
Just on the book, I was, the total estimate for the hospital field, I'm making the assumption that stuff off there was down the field, we didn't bring that in discussion, was 291,308. Not included in that price is excavation if we hit rock, I don't think that'll be an issue, I've been wrong before. Bringing in any equipment for a 490 bump three face, and permits, rentals, etc., which will be any of those. There's an addition for about $100,000 that might, uh, remote, so I'm going to have to calculate the carry side aside for $800,000 to fix this problem.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ma'am, is there any other discussion?
If you're planning about here?
No, I'm not. We haven't told, the timeline, the number here is, so we're back on time. Well, I can wait the season next month. I find the decision, the question has to be ordered by, by the end of next month or next, to make the deadline, the actual decision.
Approximately how did the project take to complete start?
Didn't say, just said the timeline was maybe 40 years tonight to satisfy the construction inclusion of the policies.
Uh, begin of the season, okay.
It's already been done.
This year has, like you, I don't have moves until next year.
Is there other discussion, Commissioner Riggins, do you have any comments?
I'd like to see, so, somebody saying that this is a have to, that if you put in the remote control thing, that's, that is up to nearly $400,000, and if you, if you get some rock, you do this or do that, you can go to $400,000 in the past nine.
Without that remote control, about $35,000? It's four, one for each field, one for the P and J field, so that'd be roughly about $10,000 just for the one, my understanding.
What did you say was eight or nine thousand? That must have been that, that's it, okay, just rounded to 10.
The $35,000 I had was for all the fields, which was full of remotes.
It was sort of, not 88, I want you to say 88,000.
Now, if we run the 89,000 dollars for football, is what I understand. Scott, sorry, I was supposed to give me a round out for 483 face, had to call it again, so, it'd be a little bit, but it's not going to be like, all right. I'm supposed to begin that one, that count, yeah?
Get one back.
The mandate for the state.
Okay, um, any idea when you'll be releasing that, Jake?
I'll just take, just land together, we'll say, it's time.
Okay, and I believe that's what you were asking for, Commissioner Riggins, the mandate for the state, I guess.
Mr. Riggins, I'm still. In the school, they have, I'm assuming, the whole building?
My understanding.
What did you say, Mr. Riggins? Yeah, he just asked a question, and what did you just ask?
I'm sorry.
What did you just ask him about, Sam?
I said, "I'm assuming in school, they have no money towards this product."
That's what I wanted, and you're saying they don't?
That's what I'm saying.
Pardon me, Fred, pardon me, we finally got here, you know, Sam. Thank you.
It doesn't grow on trees.
Now, what else to come, can we, what else, that'd be wasted before we have to actually decide, everybody?
What's your opinion on that, Mr. Riggins?
On the golf field, what?
We're just getting, we're getting in here, just call us half-bus, we really don't know exactly what's going on, we're going to be coming a lot, it's just going to be like eight, you're getting there, people sitting here, and I have a question about you, but I just, you're trying not to do it, because you want to save money?
Well, you know, what I'll try to break into, speak you down-
That would help you.
The football section here, from what we're, from what we're being told, and again, if there's some mandate somewhere, we have to save, and I don't know, who are you speaking to at the school?
Dad.
Hmm, dad? Okay, so, Matt's principle, that the lights on our football field are, I'll use the term antiquated, and there's an issue with how the lights impact the players on the field, and, so, we are being asked to provide funding to replace those lights, which in the X world, it'd be LED, even this stuff's gone, and we're being told that we have to have this done before August of this year, and if we don't have it done by the end of the upcoming football season, not the ones just again, but the fall sports, that if our football team makes state playoff level, that we won't have, be allowed to have state playoff games here- be allowed to have state playoff games here because of the lighting.
Who's mandating this?
Well, that's what we're trying to.
Who's trying to mandate this?
Um, so the school.
That's a lot.
I'm gonna say that.
Did they offer any funding?
No.
No grants, no? No grant, yeah, of course they don't, they just submit. Wow.
The school is in high school, it's a sixth grade, twenty, the high school that's new up there, so, uh, you know, lottery money is, is doubled out to schools for capital projects, but they, they dedicated their capital products money to the school, to the sixth grade, wait, at least I think that's what they, you know, quote me on that, for certain shit. That's my understanding of the process anywhere that.
That's what I understand.
Plus, they only get like, I think last year's lottery lot, it was sixty-nine thousand dollars, they base it on the average daily attendance, average daily head count in the school, so obviously your smaller systems get less.
Well, obviously, nobody's been in school, unfortunately, you guys are going, but I, I bet you're still not getting full attendance.
It's, it's the, um, if they're, if they're doing distance learning, then their county's doing that.
Is this normal? Is that what you guys are talking about here? Yes, I'm sure it is. You know, I call BDS to say.
Well, I'll say, one of the things that the, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and it's always our top priority every single year, is no mandates without funding, and of course, uh, we get some good news sometimes, but if, if not often, we get mandates that we, uh, have to receive the funds to satisfy the mandate, so it's always a concern for every county across North Carolina, and as I said, each year, that is the very first thing that we take to the legislature and, and lobby, that counties are not mandated to spend money without some help from the state.
Yeah, and especially the lights have been flagged for now, so we must, my wife is okay, you guys aren't really tired, y'all, because I could never sit there, I'd lose my cool. I'm a nice person, but I could really lose my cool, that doesn't sound, I just knew you were gonna do it the right way, I said, they're making you do it, if you don't, you don't get to have your hands, and God knows, our black nights are winning all the time, we're good.
We're very glad about that, that's kind of our climate thing.
Yeah.
To stay here. But thank you for coming to the meeting.
We're gonna come, hey, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna start, like, we're gonna try to, we're gonna be trying all those things, so you need help, you just tell us, too. Yeah, Kim's got us, she knows how to find us. You're Kim?
I am.
Kim Chris?
Yes, sir.
I didn't get, I'm honest with you, I didn't hear, I didn't want. She just smiled. So I talked to her, you used to get my pills from last week.
I am.
Is there any further discussion or questions?
I will say, this is a special meeting, so normally in a general, I mean, in a regular meeting, it's a little bit longer, but there are just certain topics that they can talk about today, that's basically, and I think they have to go in to close in just a moment, um, to discuss some applications.
Yes.
So would the board like to consider tabling, uh, the idea until we get the information on the mandate?
Yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Please.
How else could you get money to fund this thing? From immunity, like donations or other things like that?
Private donations, I, and we are exploring private donations as, as we have this discussion, completely, whether they come through or not, we, we don't know whether or not, um, in the past, we've had like our Black Knight Clubs, uh, do fundraisers for, for this type of project, I believe some of that was done under the bleachers, weren't they not? Didn't really do some fundraising, uh, and later we're putting it down. As far as grant funding, um, this is not anything that we've been able to find any grant funding at all, and I think Jacob, you've explored that pretty thoroughly.
Okay, how is this learning that happen publicly?
Good question, yeah.
Especially when people love the Black Knights so much, they.
They do, and, and I think we can hand off some public support coming in, it's, it's always been the case when it comes to especially our football team.
Yes. Get this information out, maybe need help, how do you do that? It's if you're running it through that newspaper, nobody's gonna know, seriously. And people that don't live here all the time, that come and go, got money, I mean, they may be willing to help out, but they don't really need help.
We also have a county website, I believe, Becky, would you like to just?
We have our county website, namely have our Grand County Local Government Facebook page, which would push quite a bit of information out through that, that seems to be the best way.
Well, I was trying to think about like, you know, our neighbors, who, they, they're not people like this will help, but they're now our hero, they're giving. I mean, we'll think about that. If we, if we take us on to put enough information out on the social media, this may. Because I would think those people would wanna help, I mean, they may not be full timers, but they're part of the community. And God knows they got the money. Yeah. To say, and they got pictures of them, they got, love the, love the small cap deal of this area and stuff. Wow, but ask us for help anytime, I'm already told you, you asked, you can see where we're pretty glad about that, so.
Um, but that is certainly not even considered, it's getting us getting that on, um, with the page, I don't know of any, um, legality that would affect there, do you, um, clerk or county manager? Just getting, uh, talking about the project and what the name is, you're wanting.
You draw a template, because that is the first work, or you're gonna have that of course. Well, do you have a process where you could say no unless you wanna do these and not just the work?
You could do the text, double, double, extra two, I'll answer, we're excited, one, whatever. What are?
Well, the authority for it, they would consider not rocket as a government, and then if they wanted to donate through the boosters club or to high school, that's the tax to that before it's.
Okay, well, shut up.
That, that would be an easy pass through, just like, uh, like the donation directed to be spent for the lighting rusher.
That's how ministries, I give, I give money to ministries, and they were that way to put money towards different things, that's the average. Direct it towards that instead of the ministries or something. But I still say, why can't we say no? I mean, does they really have that much power, they could just, maybe they don't have anything to say, I'm just, five or nothing.
Five, five, they're just.
County government in North Carolina is, is an arm of the state legislature, that's how it's set up, so they, they have the regulations down to higher level, but those who act, you just can't say no.
Yeah, that's, okay.
We, we can go to jail.
So depending on how that, you know, we get the copy of that, if it has the language shall, that means.
We shall.
No, if it says may, you can have a wiggle race, but if it says shall.
You're going to, you're gonna go.
Yeah. Which can cost us further funding, and if you don't do what the state says, then they.
Okay, so what was the total number here, Jacob?
Around three hundred twenty-six thousand dollars, about one remote control, four, four remote controls, that's thirty-five, I figured in thirty-five.
And then for four?
That'd be four remote controls.
We're just like more remote control.
One field, right, that's just during one field, and that is the.
This field.
Yes, the big oak state, that's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. One field.
Three hundred twenty-six. They're both different.
Which would get four, four remote controls, so you can turn it off from, somewhere else. You go home, forget the ball, and now forget to turn them off, you can push the button and turn them off. It's just a, that's what it's supposed to do. I would remember I had the remote, so I'd grab all the, back, back to the thing, do it to a fast, then I'd remember, hey, I got the remote.
Really never.
Forget that, it's a.
Very funny, Max, even if we're ready.
Oh, God.
I think they're already gonna follow it.
Okay. I was gonna say, you might be gonna.
Screw the door.
Yeah, the LED would save on the power bill for sure.
So then the money can come back.
All that savings, I mean, enjoy it, take mine.
Yeah. Yeah, but have one ball, how many hundred thousands they don't want to fix that? What? Have you done? Okay.
I know they're not cheap, but I don't know the cost of all the people.
Oh, I heard, a hundred seventy-five dollars. We get our new refrigerator, and there's too much, and he's out of market, and the fridge is a hundred seventy-five dollars. I'm kidding, you gotta never really have that. When you gotta replace an LED, it's hard to, white thing, it ain't cheap, it's a thing, isn't it, Jacob? I know you know that one.
I lost it a long time.
Uh, when they break, but when they break, it's, it's a big expense, I mean, you know, I don't know what kind of work he's just, you know, coffee's wet.
Like ten or fifteen years, I think, I can't remember.
For all the logs and things, all that, I said, the covered logs, or the. Who's doing the work? Is it the same person doing all the fields and stuff?
Well, we're not, we're not, I'll bet you're not up for discussion, but the, the price type for our field is roughly a million dollars.
Oh, no, I meant in other counties, and, because if you guys gotta do it, it doesn't, swing county, have.
Myself, we borrowed, got ready to launch in the past.
So they're just getting us up and speeding, cause they want us up, and they are a lot of, for, for. I don't know, I think, okay, I'm trying to just, I don't wanna help, I'm sorry. Do we have, what, from one, one company?
Yes, this is the one, this is the one.
We, this is the log plant that we, we said we have to, we have two, two, this is the lower of the two.
Right.
And I have another company, Jacob, I have that.
Four, four, what?
Twin.
Four.
So.
T R R A N C.
R?
R, A N C.
T O R R A N C.
That southern accent's adorable. You can hear it, don't make.
You're misunderstanding, so.
I'm kidding, I love it, though, cute, cute, cute.
Let's take some other topic, yeah.
I know, almost no, Kentucky, she can say it back, or, talking like I am right now, talking sisters and talk just like you guys, I don't know, it doesn't happen to me, no, I think.
We'll work with you.
I love it.
Okay, I believe we've agreed to table this discussion and, um, waiting for additional information that can occur. All right, uh, is there anything to discuss in closed? Okay, um, last for.